Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order. I'd like to ask you to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. By the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Garrick?
Here.
Grinberg?
Here.
Pepcorn?
Here.
Strand?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here. So we're gonna have a little shorter introduction. In May, the fire department visited 21 public and private elementary schools in the city as part of the annual Learn Not to Burn program, which is based on a curriculum established by the National Fire Prevention Association and begins early part of the school year with classroom visits by the department's deputy fire marshals. During the classroom visit, the students are taught about fire prevention and safety. The visits in May are made up of an engine or truck company allowing the students to see a fire truck and meet the firefighters. Kids love it and it seems to go well, right? As we move to the summer, the fire department wants to remind you as well that to burn only clean, dry wood that can be burned in the city. Yard waste such as leaves and grass clippings produce light embers that when burned can travel long distances and have a potential to spread fire. It's a lesson my son learned at the lake one time in which leaves did go over and start a fire in another place, so, well-learned. In additional, construction waste or lumber often contain resins, paints, and stains that can emit soap, and the odors are not only offensive but hazardous. So be careful what you burn. And finally, this is the last meeting. We're gonna transition to more video content for the mayor's message. Today, we're gonna show you two short videos. The first one features the city's forestry division celebrating Arbor Day, and the second one follows the fire department on their spring hydrant flushing rounds. Enjoy.
The Seahawk team at Carleton Ielson and some kids from Discovery here to plant what I've heard to be around 85 trees for our Arbor Day here in Fargo. A lot of people don't really know about this day. It's about helping our earth by planting trees and you know what the trees can do for us and why we need them. Our trees can range from around 50 to 3,500 years and they produce around 260 pounds of oxygen. That can make 13,900, 10,000 pounds of oxygen from just one tree that we're planting today. I like corresponding with our nature and our town here, and doing this makes me feel really good, like I'm doing something that really helps.
Flushing does a couple of things for us in the fire department. The first thing is, is it ensures that the hydrant is working and then it's flowing properly. The second thing is, if it's not flowing properly, we can make sure that it is fixed. When we do flow the hydrants, what happens is sometimes pipes release, you know, rust and other byproducts as we're flowing the water, so homeowners might notice extra rust or discoloration of the water that they have when they're opening the faucets in their house. Really, all they need to do is let the water run clean and then it'll be just fine. It starts closest to the water sources in the city. In this case, it's a reservoir in Deer Creek off of 63rd Street and 54th Avenue, and then the water treatment plant downtown on 13th Avenue South and 5th Street. From there, we just spiral out towards the remainder of the city until every single hydrant is eventually flushed, or at least checked. Every hydrant is identified with a serial number located in that geographical area, so we're able to identify numbers that way, and then by also, you know, the closest available address to them. There's about 7,500 hydrants, and there's more coming online as we speak because there's new developments going in, new streets going in, new hydrant systems. Why it's important, why we need to do it, first of all, is to check to make sure that the water flow is there and that the hydrant is operational. You know, in the emergency scene, we need that water when our water tanks run low, so it's important to have those hydrants. Second thing is, you know, make sure that, you know, if they aren't working properly, you know, we get them fixed. When you see us out flushing out in the streets, you know, in busier traffic sections, and we will be in busier traffic sections, just please slow down. We'll have the truck there with the lights on, just as protection for us and for the public, and give us the space that we need, just like if you were going through a road construction area, you know, slow down, give us the time to do our job.
Tell you guys, about halfway is done? No? Is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda? So move.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those saying aye, motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the May 20th, 2019 regular meeting?
I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those saying aye, motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items 1 through 30?
So move.
So moved, nice strand. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Garrick. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand? Mahoney?
Aye. Regular item, recommendation to approve the Bard &amp; Dowery as the bond underwriter for the upcoming refunding improvement bonds, Series 2 on 19B. Ken Costin to explain, I think Terry as well?
Yep. Yes, good evening, commissioners. Tonight, we're here to introduce a new concept with regard to how we market our special assessment bonds. As you know, we frequently issue this type of bonds once or twice a year to fund projects that have been backed by special assessments. In the case of this idea, what we normally do is market bonds directly to institutional investors, large Wall Street-type investors that buy very large denominations of our bonds. And in this case, I want to have Terry go through a process that's new and different that allows retail investors, anybody that would like to buy a City of Fargo bond, would have the opportunity to access that channel as we market these bonds. So we think this is a win-win situation for everybody in the community, as well as ourselves, and I wanted you to, have Terry to come up and go through this with you. Now, you might remember Terry from appearance, but she is working now with a new firm. It's called Baker Tilly. Baker, or Springstead, who had been with us for years as her financial advisor, was acquired by Baker Tilly initially. So if she wants to comment on that, feel free to do so, but otherwise, we would like to explain this process for you and ask for your approval to proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of the city commission, the opportunity to do a retail sale provides opportunities for your citizens and folks from the North Dakota area closer to Fargo to invest in your city bonds. And you have a very high credit rating, and so they're very valuable bonds, and so this opens up the door for that opportunity. It's called a retail sale, and it opened, and so that you can sell, the underwriter that would be hired would sell directly to individuals. And in fact, their definition of retail includes individual investors, professional money managers, and then the trust departments of banks. So it's a little bit broader, but those are the folks that will also, through the second level, be selling to individuals. It does not include bank portfolios, insurance companies, bond funds, and municipalities. So again, it's the idea to give the local area first dibs, and that is done by managing it through zip codes. And so we would look at, the areas that would be targeted would be Cass County primarily, so cities in Fargo, West Fargo, city of Moorhead, North Dakota, and they wanted to broaden that to the Cass County. So those are the primary, and then there's a listing of four or five priorities that are being discussed with the underwriter, whoever would be hired, hopefully Barrett and Doherty. So we went through the process on your behalf, and so the trick of offering a retail option is that it's not something that you can competitively bid, put the official statement out and receive bids and give to the lowest bidder. It's something that requires marketing, and it's a process for pricing. So we set, we hire the underwriter through an RFP process, and then the underwriter, along with us, we compare notes, look at comparable sales, what you've been doing in the past, and we price, come up with coupons and yields for each maturity, and then those are offered on the pricing timeframe. And at that point, there will be, in order to get this to the public, there would be a campaign, there would be information on your website, local media, maybe even meetings for the public to come in and become aware of what this is and how they can buy. And there'll be phone numbers and places where they can call the underwriter to get on the list to offer to buy maturities for the bonds on the day of sale. So there'd be a huge marketing campaign to get the word out. And they will, bonds are sold in $5,000 denominations, and so they will accept a $5,000 if that's what you want. They have said they usually see them in 10 or $25,000 blocks, but they will take an individual purchase for 5,000, as low as $5,000. We looked at 28, or we sent an RFP to 28 underrating firms, and the criteria was in several areas in choosing who this underwriter would be. Their firm's experience as a senior managing underwriter, the experience of the firm's primary staff, their experience in participating in the city's competitive bond issues in the past, so they're familiar with your credit, their definition of retail sales and their ability to market retail in the prescribed geographies, the general indication of the yield. The other goal we had is, we want to offer it to the public, but we also want to make sure that the city of Fargo isn't paying a lot of extra money in order to do that. It will come in comparable to how you've sold bonds before, it's just you're targeting your buyers. And then different information on their marketing approach and cost. We received 10 proposals, and to cut to the chase, we're recommending Barrett and Doherty to serve as senior manager and co-manager respectively. It's a joint bid. This is based on their ability, we believe, to market to North Dakota, to the targeted investors, especially in Cass County. They have a large, both of them have a large presence and have been doing work in this area, and so their combined proposal was very strong. We did look at fees, but that was just probably the last thing, because sometimes, honestly, if they don't charge enough, they probably aren't really working the retail, you know, enough. And so we looked at it, and their fee was right in the middle of the pack. Some were too low, and they were as low as 270. I'd be worried if they'd really do a thorough job of marketing to the retail. And we did have one as high as 1031, so their prices were right in the middle of the pack. So with that, we feel confident, based on their approach, they completed a substantial proposal that your team here at the city looked at. There were two representatives from the city who were involved, and two from Baker Tilly, and our combined efforts brought us to this conclusion. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Pepcorn?
Yep, Mr. Chairman. So can you kind of give us, so the residents of this area get kind of the first opportunity, but then how does it go after that? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. The priority is still being a little bit, working through it, because one of the things that happens is that Minnesota, we thought we'd have a larger presence in western Minnesota and North Dakota, and there really isn't an advantage, even though you have citizens from Moorhead. Their tax advantage is not as great by buying North Dakota bonds, so we're not sure how much interest there will be. But we had a priority of Cass County in targeting Fargo, West Fargo. The second priority was looking at the overall, the state, North Dakota retail. Third priority were commercial banks of West Fargo, and that would be, in this case, the trust funds. The fourth priority would then be, and this is where you're really not getting into retail anymore, it's national retail, and the fifth priority are any institutional investors, and then anything else that's left would be a negotiation with Barrett and Northland to buy the rest.
And can I ask, so how many, is this a fairly new thing, and how many other cities are doing this, and other government entities?
It's something that has been done, and it's not, it hasn't been done a lot. I think we, I have about six or seven examples in the last couple of years just in our office, so it can be done, but it hasn't been, you have to have, I'd say, first of all, a well-recognized name in the bond market to be able to do this. What they're going to do is, you know, sell first, the first maturities and what's left will go to the institutional investors, and you really want to have a strong name recognition so that your citizens want to buy your bonds, and so, so that's it. So it's really the triple A's, double A pluses, those high-rated ones that are going there, the ones that I've seen, and like I said, out of probably 300 bonds that we do a year, I probably, in the last year and a half, have like six to 10 that are done this way.
One more, Mr. Chairman. So I just want to thank Kent and yourself for bringing this to us. I just think it's unique. It gives the small person that wants to invest in muni bonds in our area kind of a shot versus before, would always go to a big brokerage, and we really wouldn't really, it would be broken up eventually, but I just think it's kind of fun, and it'll be interesting to see the reaction that we get and how it goes.
Commissioner Pepcorn's wondering if he puts his $5,000 down, what will he get as a rate of return?
Well, the rate of return, we've modeled these, we're looking at something in the, it's not gonna be at the, probably the high end of your portfolio, that's the, but it's probably in the 3% range, three, three and a half, and it depends, when we do the maturities, you'll be able to buy a one-year, two-year, three-year. At the low end, it might be as low as one and a half percent, two percent, and when you get out to a 25-year term, that's where you'll have the higher return. It's an ascending interest rate and yield.
Thank you. Any other question by the commissioner? Mr. Garrick?
So if we were to go to a big bank and get this loan, we would be given an interest rate for us to pay back. Are we gonna save money as the city doing this, then? Is that the intent?
Mr. Mayor, I think the intent was to have it be about the same cost to the city, but to just target so that we are allowing the citizens of Fargo and the areas identified to be on a list. So what will happen is each maturity will sell, and sometimes we get two and three and four times the orders that we need for any one of these maturities. And so if that's the case, we make sure that the first folks buy zip code are the ones who are awarded and allowed to buy the bonds, and if they get two and three times the amount of orders we need, the folks that don't have the right zip code would be the folks that wouldn't get that maturity. And if there aren't enough orders from the geographies you're looking for and from the retail sales, then that may all go to an institutional investor. We might go to level three, four, five in that case, and it just by maturity to maturity will go there. So you've got a safety net if there isn't enough interest from the local market.
Sorry to answer my next question. What's the risk of us actually paying more because we're trying to do something new and exciting for the citizens?
The, well, the, I think what we're going to do, well, I don't think there's any risk, because you've got a large, you've got the high credit rating, you've got enough investors who are interested in Fargo bonds, and so we're gonna price them with the underwriter at the going rate. What's really happening is you're offering that going rate to your citizens first, especially where you have multiple orders, so they can get in first on that particular maturity, and if they don't take it, the institutional investors who will want that are the ones that are gonna hold you true to the market rate.
Really, we'd ask Kent to look into this one time, because sometimes it is popular to do retail bond investments so local people could invest, and oftentimes, they get nudged out by big institutions. So this was a strategy that Kent talked about, to let's see what the interest is in Commissioner Garrick's concern. We'll see after it's all done whether it is better or worse for us to try, so. Any other comments? Mr. Grinberg?
Nope, sounds good. I understand it.
Okay.
Great thing to try.
Kent?
I just wanted to comment, too, that this is coming out of the Finance Committee as a recommendation, and essentially, this is a pilot project to see if there is a popularity to consummate these transactions in this manner. If it is not popular, or we don't receive a strong demand from the local community, we will revert back to our traditional method of selling to the large institutional investors. So it's a trial run, if you will, but we think it's gonna be a big success.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Let Commissioner Grinberg second.
Okay. Grinberg, take second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Since Kent's up there, we might as well do his number two. State Water Commission requests for cost reimbursement FM diversion flood project totaling
Yes, commissioners, this is a request for reimbursement to the State Water Commission for the FM diversion project. It is large in scope, $6,650,000, which is sizably more than you've seen in the past. And the reason for that is pretty straightforward. The state appropriates monies for the diversion project in chunks, and in this case, they recently approved a $66.5 million budgetary appropriation, and that's part of the overall financing of the diversion. We are allowed, under the current state law, to draw 10% of that money immediately for our administrative costs and engineering costs that we've already incurred, and so this is just recouping monies that we've already had. And we can do that in one transaction by simply listing all of our expenditures and drawing that money back to our treasury. So we'd ask for you to approve this.
Any questions? Kent, do I have a motion?
Mr. Garrick? Is this split between OXFO and the rest? Is this all together?
Yes, this is all together.
Yep.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Or a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. We move to public hearings. Zoning change to repeal and reestablish the conditional overlay, Fitzsimmons addition. Approval recommended by Planning Commission on 5/7/19. First reading of the rezoning ordinance. Donald Crest to explain.
Good evening, commissioners. Donald Crest with the Department of Planning and Development. I'll be presenting the next two items. Your packets for both of these items include a zone change ordinance prepared by the city attorney's office. Item 34A is a zone change in the Fitzsimmons addition, just to locate that for you here, 52nd Avenue South. Here's I-29. Here's the 52nd Avenue Walmart, which we often use as a reference point. It's this area outlined in black here, recently plotted within about the last year. There are seven lots here, seven addresses. This site on the ground looks about like this. These are fresh from this morning here. You're standing in this photo in the southeast corner of the property, looking northwest, pretty much an open field there. You see the remnants of an old frontage road, which is literally a road to nowhere, which will be, of course, demolished with the new development. In this photograph here, we're looking along the Easterly property line. This is I-29 in the background. In a few moments, we'll be talking about a sign that will be in about this location, commissioners. Zoning-wise, this property is Zone GC, general commercial. This is a future 51st Avenue that'll be part of this here. There is also a conditional overlay, which is the subject of our entitlement tonight, ordinance 4636, that, as these conditional overlays do, has a number of design elements involved in it. As commissioners, we've had numerous cases here before you in the past few years talking about this intersection of 52nd Avenue South and I-29, having these overlays for design on them. Some cases you've approved, some cases you've denied, but in this case, the applicant has four proposed amendments, and I promise you, I won't read every word of every one here, Mr. Mayor, but we'll just take a quick look at them here. One of them has to do with building facades and articulation. This is so you don't just get big, monolithic-looking buildings. Here, the applicant had proposed to require these articulations for buildings greater than 200 feet in length, because the same applicant has dealt with property on the east side of this intersection, that is, the Timber Creek area there, and had a similar modification. So staff recommended that we go all the way with that, and these other four items here that are listed in the staff recommendation make this equivalent to the one that's across the interstate from it. So we thought that was a fair recommendation for that one. Another one here is rooftop screening, which just talks about the way equipment is screened on the roof, makes it more practical to build these things. Again, in this case, staff would recommend just accept this amendment. It's very similar to an amendment that was recently approved in a similar type development in southwest Fargo. No problem with that one. A third element had to do with modifying landscaping to have, to have less landscaping. Staff recommended that this be, this amendment be denied because there is no precedent for doing that, and, you know, we're always looking for green space there. And then the fourth one has to do with the height of on-premise signs. Again, if you'll think about that location there, 52nd Avenue and I-29 on the south side, there is the sign that has, I believe it's the Panda Express and Autozone and Starbucks on it, and that, within, recently got a similar exception to the sign height for the on-premise sign. The applicant wanted to have one sign up to 60 feet, in an effort to, again, make it consistent with surrounding conditional overlays, staff's recommendation was to have one on-premise static multi-tenant sign positioned to be visible from I-29, maybe up to 60 feet height. Again, commissioners, let me emphasize here, this is an on-premise sign. It's not a billboard, it's not a digital billboard. It is, this is the proposed location of their sign here, and that sign looks about like this. This would have all the names, the names of this center there, and all the tenant names listed on it. So it's just advertising that site as that Panda Express one does. Again, these are just some graphics provided by the applicant. This would be where his sign is. Here, you see the Panda Express sign in the distance there. Just to give you an idea of what this would look like, when we, again, when we're looking at that first photograph, looking down the property line, that's, we're looking at down here. And this is entirely on the applicant's property. This is not on the DOT right of way. So that's the summary of those there. The applicant's representative, Tanner Brant of Pace's Lodging, is with us tonight, may wish to address the commission. The planning commission's recommendation is stated on your staff report and shown on the screen. Note that the recommendation is for approval with those recommendations from staff, and we have talked to the applicant, and he is fine with those recommendations. That's how it passed the planning commission, and so he's fine with making those modifications and not getting the one about the landscaping. That concludes staff's presentation, commissioners. Thank you.
Do we know what he's planning on putting in there yet?
I would let the applicant talk about that. Mr. Brant?
Hello. Nope, we do not know exactly when that sign is gonna be going in, but...
Well, I'm curious about the tenants. Do you know which tenants are going in there yet?
No, I don't believe we do.
Thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this zoning change or suggested motion? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Grinberg moved, and Pepcorn seconded. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Zoning change for a single dwelling residential to public institutional Huntington's addition. Approval recommended by Planning Commission 5/7. First reading of the rezoning ordinance. Donald Crest as well.
Yes, sir, commissioners. Here, we're looking at 1406 7th Avenue South. This is Clara Barton School here, water plant over here, and this lot here is vacant. There once was a residence on that, apparently. It is owned by the Fargo Public Schools. Here's some site photos from this morning, as I always say, just to make sure the site is still there. Here, we're standing on 7th Street South, looking at that lot. Here, of course, is Clara Barton School and the neighboring property, and here is a view just standing in the parking lot of Clara Barton, standing about over here, again, taking a look at the property there. As you see, that's just a, it's a vacant lot at this time. The zoning, as the mayor stated, is a single-family zone. The rest of the block owned by the Fargo Schools is public and institutional, which is what the appropriate zoning for government-owned properties like this, and so the school district is the applicant here, and they wish to just rezone this to the public institutional zoning so it matches the rest of their property. When this is developed, of course, all the other regulations that we have that will apply to that. In fact, the public and institutional zone has a special additional review for any development within 300 feet of a residential zone, so there would be, you know, a review of what would be constructed on here to make it consistent with the neighborhood. The applicant's representative, Steve Shilke of Overmiller Nelson Engineering, representing the Fargo Schools, is with us tonight and may wish to address the commission and talk about what might go on there in the future. The planning commission's recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. This concludes staff's recommendation. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Donald. Is there anyone present who wished to speak to this new zoning? Does anybody wish to speak? If not, we'll close public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I so move.
Strand, is there a second? Strand, is there a second?
Second.
Grinberg? Donald, I want to thank you for taking pictures of the sites. I think that's helpful to this commission, just so they see where you're talking about sometimes. Oftentimes, we see it in overlay, but it's nice to see the neighborhood as well, so I appreciate that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Mayor 34C is continued, I believe you have that?
Yep.
Okay, sir, thank you.
So we're going to continue C to 61719.
Yes, sir, that was continued at the request of the applicant.
Do we need to vote that or just accept that? I think we need to vote that, right?
Yeah, take a motion on that to...
I'll take a motion on that.
Continue to the next regular meeting.
I'll move to continue it.
There a second?
Second.
Moving to second it. Pepcorn and Garrick, roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item D, special assessments for the 2018 reconstruction of city-ordered sidewalks, Dan Everhart to explain.
Good evening Mayor and Commissioners. Item D, special assessments for 2018 reconstruction. Those were notices, city-ordered sidewalks for reconstruction, notices were sent out, bids were taken, construction was completed, and now we're through the certification project and your approval. In that project, we assessed 208 projects for a construction and administrative costs of $236,135.03. Any questions?
Questions by Commissioners? Mr. Garrick?
And this was a 1% over interest rate as well, correct?
Correct. Any other discussion? Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I was going to ask a question on the next topic, but as long as Commissioner Garrick brought that topic up, and with Commissioner Grinberg on the phone, is it the sense of this special assessment task force that there will no, be no changes contemplated with that 1% fee? Or is that something that might, might change? I just don't know the status of where that ad hoc special assessment task force committee is at.
That is a great point, Commissioner Strand. I think the option is open for the City Commission to review a fee change if that's what deems appropriate, as a list of items that have been discussed at the task force. As you probably should have been received today, the community public forums have been posted, and we'll take that final information and wrap up and bring recommendations to the City Commission. So I think this is one of the things you can expect to have a discussion on again, yes.
And Commissioner Grinberg, if I might continue, is there a potential recommendation for change?
On the 1% fee, I think is what Commissioner Strand is articulating.
I don't think there's a specific recommendation, but the discussion on that the fees should be examined and reviewed as one of the center points of discussion. I don't have those lists in front of me, but I do know there's been discussion on us taking a look at reviewing those fees, as well as, you know, the bond issues and when a special for a particular property is paid off, and that kind of a rebalance of that obligation, whether it's, you know, 80% into the 25 or 30-year period. Those are things yet that will be on the list that will be coming forward.
Commissioner Garrick?
Yeah, John, to your point, this is brought for discussion in a questionnaire, you know, from the task force members, you know, should we reduce that fee, that 1%? And I think the majority of people that responded back said yes. So has there been a specific recommendation to what that number should be? No. But I think that most of you recognize that a 1% over is not required, considering that no one's ever defaulted on these loans before. So my recommendation would be for this to be at least a half percent, reduce half percent to half percent. And that's why I'm not going to support these special assessments at a 1% still. Like I said, no one's ever defaulted on these loans. Our stated purpose for the 1% above beyond is to create a buffer in case people do default, so there is no need for it. There's plenty of money in that fund if there was a default, so that's why I won't be supporting it.
Ken Costin, you wanted to comment on the 1% fee? I mean, this was brought forth for 1% and is there reasons for that? Tony's had the ability to have the whole specialist committee discuss it, but the public hasn't heard it, so maybe you can comment to that, please.
Yeah, I think, excuse me, I think it might be appropriate to bring that forward for continuation of discussion through the task force. I don't recall that this specific issue is on the list. There may be questions. But there are two or three issues with regard to how we manage our debt service funds that would be appropriate for discussion by the commission, so that you fully understand what the purpose of the current procedure is and what we do and how we do it, and so that it's clear. Again, Commissioner Garrick is correct, it does act as a buffer for special assessment delinquencies. We've been lucky in that our economy's been strong and we haven't had issues with wholesale defaults, but cities very near us have, so it's not impossible that we would run into some issues. And again, these are 25-year obligations, and it's very difficult to predict the economic future, so that's part of the reasoning for the markup.
Let's say, for instance, tonight we did a 1%, if the task force comes out and then recommends a half percent, would there be ability to draw this back to a half percent administrative fee?
I think that, it would be an excellent question for our bond council. I suspect once you've pledged them and you've drawn up warrants, which are the legal attachment to the assessments to get that revenue stream started, they stay at whatever you approve. So I believe the answer is likely no.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, Mike, I'm wondering about timing here, and I, I'm really looking forward to our dialogue when the recommendations come back to us about specials, and I'm looking forward to their recommendations, but I'm hesitant here to reinvent policy when this is in front of us. Yet I'm also cautious that we may go on a path that in a short time will amend it significantly with what comes out of the committee. Is this delayable, or is this something that has to happen now?
Dan, they're already done, right? The sidewalks already done?
They're already done, completed, and been through the process of certification.
So that being the case, if we acted on this subsequent to the policy evolution through the process of the committee and the commission, and then acted on that, so if this were delayed a few months, with then the new policy in place, would there be harm to that or not?
Yes, Commissioner Strand, I appreciate your question in that regard. Most all of these projects, I think with the exception of one or two, have already been delayed about a year. And if you recall, last year, we received a special loan provision through the Bank of North Dakota, and it was a 2% loan, and so we decided we were going to use that, and we purposely pulled these set of projects off of being levied a year ago to allow you to make a decision on the current policy. So we really do need to kind of move these forward because cash flow to the city and especially the assessment projects is important to keep the projects moving. And so if this is passed, this would be the final step of the process to close out that Bank of North Dakota loan. And I just wanted to reiterate, this has been delayed one year already, so it's really to our advantage to move along. And the next thing you'll be seeing sometime between now and fall will be construction projects that are being closed out from last year and this year. And again, you'd have to make that same determination about the policy, current or future, after the assessment committee works on it. But it, the size of the bond issue coming forward, this one we just talked about, doing this retail sale option, is a $40 million bond sale. That's a large transaction, and we really need to have a sense that they are going to be levied in the amounts that reflect the current policy. So it's really difficult, what I'm trying to explain is, it's really difficult to hold up the train, if you will, on the cash liquidity of the city to make an ultimate decision on your assessment policy. But, but once that policy has been ratified, then we'll consistently follow that, and transactions going forward would be subject to the new policy.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. So Kent, if the special assessment task force heard this and decided that they would move this topic to the front burner to get that policy recommendation to us as soon as possible, and we could do that in a month or two or three, is that doable?
This is Commissioner Grinberg. I don't see that as pragmatic. Commissioner Strand? I see a list of things that we're going to have to, you know, determine what to adopt in the policy as the commission. And I guess my sentiment at this point is any policy changes, and again, Kent or Mr. Grub can jump in here as well, will be effective for the calendar year 2020. And a significant part of that, obviously, is the impact the legislature's had on providing, you know, funds that you commonly heard as the Purry Dog Bill. So that'd be my take on this at this point, is the policy change coincides with the next fiscal year.
I think, Tony, one of the other issues is that throughout the state of North Dakota, a lot of people are 1.5, 1.5, they can go to 1.5 to 0.5. And I don't know that the specialist committee has teed this up real far. They've had the discussion, Commissioner Garrick, but I don't know that's been the biggest way they could change specials. There's been some other offered ideas to do that, and I think those will have more significant impact on people's specials than the 1% fee, which is really a quarter. I mean, all I talk about is cutting it in half, but the real impact seems to be in other areas, so. But we have this in front of us tonight. Commissioner Garrick?
John, maybe to put your mind at ease a little bit, about a year and a half ago, we were still doing 1.5% above the rate. In one meeting, we just decided it would be 1%. There was no task force, there was no change in policy, there was no big discussion about it. We just decided one day it would be 1% instead of 1.5%. After we heard from residents of Fargo that they weren't happy with that, with that fee. So for us to go to now from 1 to a half, it would be the same thing. It doesn't require a big change in policy, we just do it because we know that's the right thing to do. That's what the citizens of Fargo want to do. And the fact that no one's ever defaulted on these loans in the last, since Kent's been our finance director, which has been a very long time, right Kent? That it's not going to happen. So the stated purpose of it is, I think, doesn't hold water. It doesn't take a big policy change to do it. We just do what's right for the city of Fargo. So I'll move the suggested motion to approve this at a half percent instead of a 1%.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving to second it. Kent, how long has it been at 1%? It's been several years.
Yes, Mayor, I don't have the exact date, but it has been 1% for many years. I think the source of that maybe went back to the prior Blue Ribbon Task Force on special assessment. I think that was in 2004. There was a series of changes that we made to make special assessments more affordable somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 to 20% more by tweaking the assumptions. So yes, it has been 1% for several years.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. Kent, I'm just curious, and again, I don't, I'm not into making policy without the data, and I especially seconded that so we could have a little more discussion, but, but I'm there with Commissioner Garrick. What I would like to know is when we get to that point through the special assessments task force, that we know exactly what percentage it should be so that it's essentially a break even. I don't think that that percentage is supposed to be a moneymaker. On the other hand, I don't think we'd be prudent to, be prudent on our behalf to undercut it and not have enough funds. So that's what I'm looking for, is what is the sweet spot? What is the exact, in your best estimation ultimately? Unless you know that now, is it 1% or is it a half percent that, so that it's essentially a break even?
Commissioner Strand, it's not a mechanical calculation, and it's not a precision calculation. It has to do with economic assumptions, and it has to do with what we think may happen into the future, making sure that you have enough capacity within the fund to stay solvent. I did prepare a series of charts and graphs for the special assessment task force that showed some various assumptions between 1 down to maybe a half and some of those types of things. That was presented during the discovery of the special assessment task force, and at this point, I don't believe there's been any action by the task force to put it on as a highlighted item. It certainly was discussed, but, so to answer your question more succinctly, we have done some analytics on it, and whenever the committee or the City Commission chooses to want to discuss that in more detail, we'd be happy to revisit those graphics.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you. My final comment on that is I intend to join Commissioner Garrick in the, in the approach to that topic going forward to see if we can lower it, if it's reasonable and feasible to do that. But, but I'm not going to make policy doing that right now in this, in this action before us. I'd rather have the policy drive us. And, and when it comes back to us, I will, I will be joining you, Commissioner Garrick, in, in tightening that up as much as we can, so that the citizens are paying the least amount possible. But for the moment present, I seconded it so we could have this, this dialogue. I think it's really important. I know when the special assessment task force committee was created, we thought they'd be done by last December, so we kind of expected that these policies would be here for us this year. But I'll wait for the policy discussions to affect the policies then, and for the moment present, go with the staff recommendation.
Roll call vote?
Before we do, do you want to close the public hearing?
I'm sorry. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the specials and sidewalk construction? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, now we'll close public hearing.
We'll shout out to Nancy for that one.
Oh, thank you. Roll call vote?
Mayor, the vote is on the amendment?
Yep.
Or the, on the amendment?
There wasn't a first primary vote, so it was, he gave the original motion with the half percent interest. So it starts with Garrick Strand.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
No.
Pepcorn?
No.
Grinberg?
No.
Mahoney?
No.
Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve special assessments for the 2018 reconstruction of city-ordered sidewalks as recommended by the staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
No.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item E, special assessment list for the following proven districts, all having been approved by the Special Assessment Commission on 42319, set the interest rate at 1% per annum and a net rate on the bonds financed in said projects. Dan Everhart to explain as well.
Again, Commissioners, before you have 18 projects, one of those of the 19 was the sidewalk reconstruction. We had a total project cost of 30-plus million, a special assessed amount of 14.9 million, affecting some 3,886 parcels. Any questions?
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the special assessments of these approving districts? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Move for approval.
I'll second.
Second.
Grinberg, Pepcorn.
You decide that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call vote as well.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
No.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Looking forward to a good discussion on that. 35, request from the Transit Department to expand service into industrial park. Matt Peterson to explain.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. Let's see here. Several months ago, we were approached by United Way inquiring about its service into the industrial park of Fargo. They had asked us several questions, started talking with some businesses out there and some community outreach. Thomas Hill is here today. I'm going to give it over to him and let him explain to you kind of what they have done, their initiative, and then once he's done, I can come back and talk about numbers and things like that. So this is Tom.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to present this topic in front of us this evening. My name is Thomas Hill, the Vice President, Community Impact for United Way of Cass Clay. We have, Matt is correct, we've been talking about transportation into the industrial park since really last October, and the reality that we know is that the industrial park currently, along with the surrounding areas, has over 19,000 jobs that are really providing a huge opportunity for economic vibrancy and growth for Fargo, our region, and even the entire state of North Dakota. What we also know with those 19,000-plus jobs is that since the 1990s, there has not been public transportation into the industrial park. And this does create a significant barrier for individuals when they're trying to access employment in the industrial park or maintain employment into the industrial park. At United Way, one of our bold goals is actually to lift people out of poverty, and one of the best ways to do that is to provide opportunities for full-time living wage employment. We know that right now, over 1 in 9 individuals in our community lives in poverty, and to us, that's not okay. We also know in these conversations, not only with service providers but businesses, they would welcome this opportunity. And so, as Matt said, we approached them really last September, October, and said, what can we do to provide opportunities? How can we partner on this, knowing this is, the industrial park is such a huge employer of individuals in our area? So we held multiple individual meetings, we held multiple roundtable discussions. I know Commissioner Pepcorn and Mr. Mayor, you were also able to participate in one of those roundtable discussions with employers and service providers. We also had conducted surveys to those employers in the industrial park, and I think what, to us, the real aha was at that, at that roundtable, when we asked businesses, we said, are you having trouble finding employees for the industrial park? Some of them said, yes, we kind of are, and some of them said, we don't have a problem with this. And the aha to us was when the service provider said, from the Department of Vocational Rehab, said, you know, I have like 25 people who would love to apply for jobs in the industrial park, but they don't see the industrial park as an option for employment because they can't get there. And just to look at the employer saying, well, it was almost like, well, I've got jobs that, that I could help, you know, get those people to. So when we had done the follow-up survey, we knew that service providers and employers alike would really appreciate this opportunity. I can share you the exact stats on the surveys that we've done. We also know in talking with Matt Bus that the opportunity does exist to provide an innovative, cost-effective pilot for transportation into the industrial park. I'll let Mr. Peterson talk specifically about tap ride, how that will work. We also have a business here, Mr. Brian Bostart, who's the Director of Operations for John Deere Electronic Solutions, has graciously said he would provide any comments or answer any questions if you do have any, from the employer's standpoint. Short of it all, is we know that employers need it to continue providing opportunities for economic mobility and growth in our community. Individuals want it, but they do not have access to it. And we know as an organization, United Way, we are committed to increasing access and reducing barriers to making sure people can get a livable wage job. We think this is a doable opportunity, and I want to stand before you at the commission to say that we are willing to partner with the commission on the implementation of this. We're willing to partner with Matt Bus to provide financial resources, not only to help the operations of this pilot, but also to do the education and the outreach. And I think that's what's very, very important. It's one thing to say the service is available, but it's another to make sure that citizens who so desperately rely on public transportation can actually access it. They know how to do it. They know how to ride the bus. It's in a language that they can read. The times are actually appropriate for their work schedules. And because United Way has a really intricate network of service providers, nonprofit community partners, schools, we can do and help lead the education and outreach efforts. And so I just, again, want to make that commitment, that United Way is really wanting to see this pilot happen. We sincerely appreciate the opportunity to bring this in front of you, and also partner with Matt Bus as well as the other businesses in the industrial park on this.
Thank you. Matt, you going to fill it out then?
Sorry?
The economic part of it?
Yes. So we had several different discussions over the course of the last few months. Ultimately, we want to get all of our routes on what we call fixed route vehicles, which are our 35-foot vehicles that travel through town. In this instance, because of the location of the industrial park, where our current fixed route fleet is, and just the way our current route alignment is, our best option would be to implement tap ride until we break it, so to speak. The hope is that tap ride would not be able to keep up with the demand, and then we would be looking at adding this to our fixed route system, doing a slight route change with Route 17, and having to purchase another vehicle for the overall expansion. In the meantime, we would use a tap ride option similar to what we have up on NDSU campus, allowing people to request a pickup and drop-off for their work in the industrial park via an application, or one of two kiosks. We would design this tap ride service to have a kiosk at West Acres, where people could just request a ride by pressing a button there, and the vehicle would come, pick them up, bring them into the industrial park, or up at the Whale of a Wash area, which is on our current Route 17. We felt it was very important to tie this into our fixed route service, since eventually our long-term goal would be to have, you know, 30-minute fixed route service on this route. So this is kind of a map, it's a little hard to see, but the highlighted blue area is the industrial park area that we would service. Towards the bottom is the West Acres area. We have a transit hub that's right there. We would put a kiosk in there that people can say, you know, come pick me up, request a ride, or also up here on 12th Avenue by the Whale of a Wash and the Casey Store up there. A couple of, there's several large businesses up here that we do get requests from. Our last transit development plan that we had, the industrial park was considered an unmet need, and most of you probably know that there's that Sanford Medical Clinic up here that does a lot of drug testing, DOT testing. All of our drivers are drug-tested, and they cannot take a bus to get there. They all have to drive themselves up there and get back, and we're finding that with a lot more locations. That's like one of the number-one areas that really want to see service, is that Sanford Medical Clinic. Since we don't have a vehicle for this service right now, we would actually have to lease a vehicle, and we would be able to do that because of the tap ride service, we use a, what's called a cutaway vehicle, similar to our pair transit service. So that's about $2,000 a month that we would lease that vehicle for, and that would give us time to see if the route was operating as we expected, performing the way we wanted it to, making those tweaks, and then we would be able to purchase a vehicle for a long-term implementation into the system. If we were to start this in August of this year, which I believe is what we have discussed, is trying to start this in the summer months instead of a fall or winter timeframe, just so, you know, there's always that learning curve. Whenever we start a new route, we want the weather to be as decent as possible. We don't want it to be really cold out, really, you know, yucky, any of that type of stuff. So we would be estimating around 2,100 service hours or revenue hours for that. All the costs are up there, tap ride software, display screen, vehicle lease, so it would be a total of about $93,448 would be the estimate for the service for the remaining 2019 year, starting in August. 2020, the revenue hours, since we would be a full year, would go up about 5,100 hours. We are expecting an increase with our driver services contract, right around that 2% amount, so that's where the 25,46 per hour comes from. We would still have that same vehicle lease of about $2,000 through July. That would be, of course, until we get a vehicle, a grant for a vehicle and a vehicle ordered. Maintenance costs and total cost for 2020 is around 182,248. And with the, United Way has pledged what, $75,000 to help support this effort. So in 2019, the total operating cost would be about $93,000, and we would use $70,000 of that money to help offset the cost. So we would only be looking for the city commission to do a budget adjustment of around $24,000. 2020, there would be about $5,000 left of that money that we would apply towards the operation, and then we did put in our 2020 budget proposal for this service, and that would be an increased funding of around $177,000 there. Questions for me?
Are the people who need to have those jobs, Phil, are they contributing in some way?
Are they contributing?
Industrial park members, are they contributing in some way?
Mr. Mayor, I can, as far as the United Way contribution and investment into this, we have multiple investors, so the EDC, the FMRI Foundation, the Chamber of Commerce, Cornerstone Bank, Microsoft, have really made this possible. But I want to make sure in that it's abundantly clear that the businesses who are up in the industrial park are absolutely supporting United Way, and they're supporting this community. So yes, they have contributed to make this effort possible, because the reason that we have the dollars available to invest is because we've been able to place full-time attention on this effort, partner with Matthew, Julie, members of Matt Bus to make sure this happens, and frankly, to devote the financial resources necessary. So they are absolutely involved in this, and I think, again, as entities that provide a large contribution to the Fargo tax base, absolutely, I think they're contributing to this as well.
Question is, if the pilot doesn't come out pencil out by end of December, are we still committed to the next year?
So the reason that, on the very bottom, it's a 17-month cost, is we would run this, we would want commitment to run this for a full 17 months. We like that two-year timeframe. Next September timeframe is when we would be taking a look at all of those numbers and deciding if this was something that we needed to go ahead with. We would actually do it a little bit earlier in June to align with our budgets, but that's when we can make more of a final decision as to how the service was running, if we, you know, needed to amend it in some way, whether keep it as a tap ride or try and get it into fixed route. We would have some data at that point. The hardest part for us to implement any new service where we're not currently going is we have no idea what the demand or the need is, because we have no data to pull from. And using a tap ride service gives us really good data and allows us to kind of take a look at exploring into new zones before putting a lot of money in a lot of permanent, like shelters and different things like that into their, into the service.
Mr. Garrick?
I don't know the answer to the mayor's question directly. Are the companies that have letters of support for this project giving us money for this project?
They're not giving, Commissioner Garrick, they're not giving the city of Fargo money for this project specifically. Those businesses that have provided letters of support are supporting United Way, which has allowed us to be able to invest in this. So I guess by proxy, sure, but they are the ones who are supporting United for Workforce Development Pathways, which has made this whole initiative possible.
The other point I want to make, if I could, is this is something, again, should be talked about during the regular budget cycle. We're halfway through the year, and we're talking, or even further than halfway through the fiscal year, and we're talking about adding dollars that we had not budgeted for currently. We should wait until the end, see how this all shapes up. We've got, we've got all our divisions asking for, what, 40 more employees? We've got, the Fire Department needs a new, Fire Department, they need to fix Station 2. I mean, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of moving parts within a budget, and though it's only $24,000 this year, for the rest of the year, it's a $200,000 impact for the next fiscal year, for, combined. So again, great idea, I think it's good, it's something we need to focus on, but it has to go into the pecking order of what we think is the most important thing for our city. We're talking about spending tax dollars on it. So no for right now, I'm not going to vote for it now, but during the budget cycle, I'd be more than happy to look at this and see where this flows out in our priority list.
Mr. Pepcorn?
Sure, just a couple of things. First of all, we've been trying to do this for years and years and years, so I just, I want to thank the United Way for being the catalyst. That's what I would describe it, and Thomas, and then also, I want to make sure, Ahmed Shill also worked with you, and then Kristi Huber is here tonight. I think it's a great thing, this is a collaboration, and I think, I want to thank Matt, because he put in a lot of work trying to get this all to work. And I do think the tap ride tech, that technology is what's allowing this to happen. In the past, we've tried to get routes out there, and it's just too hard with the shift changes at different times. So the other thing that's happening now is people are walking from the, from the nearest drop for Matt Bus, in the wintertime, they're walking to work. It's two miles, and that's not, that's not how we should roll. And I think this is, this is just a great thing. I'm very proud of everybody and how we've worked, and it's a unique opportunity, and that's part of what us as leaders, we get to participate in. And I think focusing on not doing anything all the time, there's lots of towns in North Dakota that that's all they do, you know, and we want to have vision, and this is solving a need. The employers out in the industrial park, they are looking, they're begging for employees, and this is a way, a lot of those employees don't have any way to get there, and this is it. So it's, I think it's just, it's a multiple win. When they talk about win-win, this is way more than just two wins. And so I'm thankful to be a part of it. I was a little surprised, I think they were a little bit scared, they came in and talked to me, instead of talking to John Strand first, they were like, geez, what's this guy? I haven't heard very many good things about that. So they were a little nervous when they came and met with me, and I think they were surprised. I was like, absolutely, let's go. And so thank you very much for doing this. I think this is part of what makes a city great. This is, these are people, this is their first job, a lot of the people, and they're high-paying jobs down the road, and so it's a great thing. And so I would encourage everyone to vote for it, because I think it's what makes our town a pretty neat thing. Thank you.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner Pepcorn, I'm completely on board with you on this. You know, one of the best things about this proposal is it's, it has come to us from the people. It's not like we're out trying to drum up more roles and jobs and responsibilities for government to provide. This is our citizenry coming to us and saying, we have a need, and we'd like your help partnering with us to address that need. And you know, Thomas Hill, you and your organization, the United Way, you're doing an amazingly good job addressing needs of affordable housing, of transit, of childcare, of living wages. You know, you've really stepped up, and I'll toot his horn for a moment, but he's also a really valuable member of the Community Development Committee, so his service is significant. And so this came to us, from the people. There's folks out there who'll say, well, you know, we got, we need to make sure that those businesses are contributing. I don't know that's been our formula for transit, that we need to make sure everybody along everybody route, every route is paying their share. I don't think that's been what's driving us with transit. Here we have an amazingly significant job shortage, and we have good-paying jobs, and we have people who need to get to those jobs. This is just like connecting the dots. I thank you for bringing this to us, and I know it's out of the budget cycle, but I'll leverage $24,000 for this year just to get it going, and hope you, we can all get this going ongoing.
Can I have a motion, John, since you're excited about it?
I'll also move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Grinberg, any comments?
Nope, supported fully as well. Commissioner Pepcorn had some very eloquent remarks, and I agree horribly.
Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
No.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for all your hard work. Appreciate it. Grant Larson, I'm sorry I missed you, just I pushed you back one more. I know you're excited to give this report, but you're going to talk to us about mobile food truck pilot program. Thank you for all your hard work on this, by the way.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, give me, good evening, Commissioner. Yes, I would, I'd like to, staff has proposed a new pilot program. There was one that was tabled last year by Commissioner Strand, so we brought this one back and proposed this one for 2019. And it's part of your documents that you have, the main one is in front of us here. So basically, what we've done is propose less is more in this case. What we want to do is focus on the collaboration between stakeholders, and right now, what we have is we're just proposing 12 Fridays throughout the summer to allow the food operators to actually vend food, and in the process, and that would essentially start the ball rolling on collaboration with all the other stakeholders, so we can develop permanent policy that I can bring to you, back to you for 2020, is the, is the intent.
Any questions?
Any questions, Grant? We took public comment at this, got a variety of different responses. This is off the streets, so we're not using public resources in that regard, and we're not interfering with any of the businesses in downtown Fargo, so the sense is, let's see what a pilot does. And to Commissioner Garrick's comment as well, we could easily have food trucks throughout the city. This would be an attempt to try to see how that would be involved, and actually would encourage that presently. They can be anywhere in the city on private property if they do something with the private property owner. Any discussion? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the pilot.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Project number 36, bid and award and bid alternates for Project FM 1413. Brenda Derry to explain? Sure is nice to see those houses out in that green grass growing. Now you're going to disturb it again, I see.
Yeah. Our work's never done. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. In front of you, last Wednesday, we received bids on the flood levy improvement project in Oak Creek and Copperfield Court. Our base bid came in, about $100,000 under our engineer's estimate, and then what we did is we had visited about a couple of weeks ago, we did ask for an alternate to include the wheel-in property at 4033 Copperfield Court. You'll see that that's an additional cost of $166,370. So in front of you today, you have two possible contracting options. One is, the first one is the base bid plus the alternate, so that includes the wheel-in property. The second one is the base bid, which would not include it.
Any questions of Brenda? Mr. Pepcorn?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Which one do you recommend, Brenda?
I would ask Nancy to come up and make her recommendation.
Which one?
So, here's what I'll tell you, is we did a little bit of information after our base bid. If we do pull the property out, we figured it would be about and rebid the project just for that one property. You're looking at about a $75,000 to $100,000 additional on top of that one, about $166,000. So, I mean, there will be additional cost to leave it out also when we, when we would rebid it.
Mr. Chair, but isn't this why we took action the last time? We were trying to do this so we could not have to spend additional money, so isn't it, if we approve it the way it is with the, with the alternate in there, then we would save some money, correct?
Correct.
Okay, recommended item one. Eric, do I have your finger up? You want to say something I could tell?
Yeah, so, yeah, Commissioner Pepcorn, yes, and the dialogue from two weeks ago was the other value to the city, to the neighborhood, to the flood safety of the, of the area, to be able to complete the project, if you will, which is alternate number one. And I know you were expressing strong sentiment at that time, and the motion was to approve that approach. So, that's, that's alternate number one, but, but the motion, the reason it's in two options was, the motion was to include it as an alternate, that's why it's in front of you that way.
Mr. Chairman, but, so Nancy, my question is, it sounds like you're not really positive. I thought we, I thought if we approved this, then, then we could go ahead.
Well, and I agree with that assessment, Commissioner. Thank you. The situation is that this matter is in litigation. We do have a final order for possession of the property. That order has been appealed to the Supreme Court, and that the matter is up on appeal to the Supreme Court.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. Eric, if I could indulge you for a moment, we had an executive session, and of course, we can't and don't divulge what happened in executive session, but the gist of our executive session would be reflected in motion number one, is what I'm guessing.
Correct, yes.
I move measure, we adopt a measure number one, or number one option.
Mr. Second?
I'll second it.
Further discussion? Mr. Gary?
We did discuss, do we not, illegal risks, though? There is a risk out there that they would appeal, and then we're constructing a levy on someone else's property, right? Or is that not possible?
Well, there, there is uncertainty of some level anytime there's litigation, so yes, there is risk.
I just wanted to point that out, that's why there's two options here, because, I mean, it's not a slam dunk. It's good, but if it happens, then we're spending those dollars too, so I want to make sure everyone's aware of that.
It's an attempt to get it all done in one project, which is cheaper if we have to split it, it costs us more money as a city, so the motion is basically to keep the cost down, unanticipating the risk of the litigation. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Grinberg?[1711.60]